Oh, three P M. What is this, October, November twelfth? Two thousand fourteen. Um, my name's Richard Riley, chairperson of the zoning board. Uh, do a roll call. I'll do a roll call. Greg Lapine.
Here.
John Regan.
Here.
Rick Riley, president.
Yeah.
Eric Cushion.
Eric Cushion. So, I'm going to appoint Greg Lapine and Eric. Uh, no, yes, and Eric Cushion to the board this evening.
Those people left. Those people left here.
Yeah, not present would be Laura Gandia, Tom Cooney, and John Deveraux. So, first on the agenda, we have, um, case number two thousand fourteen dash zero four. Um, name of the applicant is Dennis and Michelle Doobie. Address, their address is Seven Woodland Drive, Litchfield, New Hampshire. Um, they are the owners of this property. The location of the property in question for the variance is also Seven Woodland Drive, map twenty-three, lot fifty-five. The variance being requested is... Should've brought my glasses. Um, oh, I got it. A variance from L Z L section five zero-two dot zero-three setbacks. Um, the applicants are proposing to construct a twenty-eight by twenty-four-foot attached garage, um, uh, which would end up being ten-foot from the east property line, where a minimum of twenty-foot sideline setback is required. So essentially, you'd be looking for a variance of ten-foot. Um, I have a denial letter from the code enforcement office, uh, the building inspector. Uh, this would be from Mr. Kevin Lynch. Says, "Dear Mr. and Mrs. Doobie, a building permit was recently reviewed applying for a twenty-eight by twenty-four attached garage from your contractor, Hallmark Home Improvement. After reviewing the proposed garage building permit application, it was found that the proposed garage would be ten-foot from the east property line. The minimum sideline setback is twenty-foot per Article five hundred, section five zero-two dot all three of those Litchfield zoning regulations. Your building permit has been denied for not meeting the minimum sideline building setback. You can ask for a variance and/or an appeal of administrative decision of my finding to the zoning board of adjustment. If you have any questions, please call my office at four two four four five nine two." So, we needed to read that into the record, so I had to get that.
That I thought I had corrected with the building inspector.
Okay.
It's supposed to be, you have the width and the depth different. Yes, twenty-four by twenty.
We're only looking for ten feet of relief.
Okay. Twenty-four by twenty.
Twenty-four by twenty-eight.
I don't know, some reason I, I...
There you go.
Maybe I have a new, uh, plot plan.
Thanks, man. I got it.
Twenty-four by twenty-eight.
Alright, so, the public notice that went out would be wrong too, but basically, this is...
Still ten.
It's on the plan right there.
Yeah, it's alright, uh, ten-foot is required, yeah. So it's twenty-four by twenty-eight. Not a problem.
The twenty-eight would have taken us off of that. And then when I wipe that hand, he...
I realize he has his.
Okay, I made those corrections there. Twenty-four by twenty-eight's what's in the drawings, so we're okay with that. Alright, so, um, as I was explaining earlier how the process works, um, what, what we'll be asking you to do is to, in a moment, uh, present your responses to those five questions that were on the application. Um, we may ask you some questions as we go along. Uh, at any time, if you have any questions for us, feel free to ask. Um, once we've gotten past, you know, what you want to present to us and any questions that we may have had, we'll ask for public input. If there's anybody else that's here at the time, they'll be allowed to speak, either for or against. Um, we'll check back with you one more time to make sure there isn't anything more you want to add. At that point, we're going to close public input, and that's when we deliberate, we deliberate in, in, in the open. Um, uh, we may, once we've closed public input, kind of based on our dialogue back and forth, we might have a couple more questions for you, at which point, we'll ask those questions. Um, but, you know, once public input is closed, really, you're not supposed to add more information unless we ask for it. That's the way the whole thing works. Uh, um, then at some point, once we're done, kind of going back and forth, uh, I'll ask for, for a, a motion to either approve or deny. If we're at that point, somebody will make a motion, we'll take a vote. Okay? Um, everybody all set with this?
Mm-hmm.
And would you please, uh, if you wouldn't mind, just kinda, I, I gotta pick up on the mic because we're recording this, uh, so that we can take the minutes. So if you wouldn't mind just coming up to the table and then just go ahead and get started, whoever's been elected to do this. Again, don't, don't be, don't be nervous. This is easy stuff.
Don't be nervous.
Easy stuff.
We have all been...
And when you refer, when you refer to any pictures or maps, just let me know, because I think I've got all the copies that you guys gave us here. So I just want to make sure that everybody knows, when you're talking about pictures or drawings, that they know what the, what to look at. Go right ahead. State your name, please, and your address, and then go right ahead, please.
Uh, my name's Michelle Doobie. I live at Seven Woodland Drive, Litchfield.
Yep.
You're the speaker.
And, okay. Um, I'm here asking for a variance to be able to build a twenty-four by twenty-eight attached garage to the, uh, right side of my property, which, um, would encroach on the twenty-foot distance that I'm required to have between my property boundary. Um, my property boundary does not, it's not like a perfect square. It kinda tapered in, um, so that's why, if we built anything onto that side of the house, the back corner of the, whatever we built, whatever structure it was, would, um, encroach on that property boundary.
That looks familiar.
You're doing fine.
I'm doing fine.
Absolutely.
We're listening.
Um, it's just a, a two-bay garage. Um, it's a little bit deeper to provide us with a little more storage and workspace for my husband. Um, it will have a, uh, a loft upstairs, just for storage, Christmas storage. Um, and, uh...
That's about it.
That's about it. I...
So you're close at the back, and you're further away than the line at the front?
Yeah.
Correct. Nineteen feet?
Yeah, nineteen feet.
Is this an old lot?
Sixty-nine?
Yeah, the house was built in sixty-nine.
Okay.
And what's the, uh, to the left of the house? Is that the Litchfield?
Nope. The, to the...
That's in the back.
Oh, no, that is our swimming pool.
Oh, that's in the back.
There's a swimming pool back there.
So, and then, um, the neighbors here, these are the, your neighbors?
Mm-hmm.
How old is, so?
Yep. So we have a good amount of, it's just all wood line between our property and their property.
So they would never be wanting to build in here, right?
No, the, the... Yeah, it's like a big ravine that goes down to Chase Brook, towards the back.
Okay.
Um, but between our two properties, our neighbor to the right sits up higher because of their, their land contour is up high.
That would be this property right here?
On the right side, yes.
Yes, yes.
Well, it looks as though you made an effort to, by moving the garage forward.
We did. We figured if we bumped it forward, it would, we were hoping it would be, move forward enough that we wouldn't encroach on any spacing, but, um...
Less driveway to plow.
Yeah.
Is the front of the garage nineteen feet off the property line, or fourteen?
That's nineteen.
Looks like nineteen.
Nineteen? Nineteen, right. Is it nineteen feet up the front?
This number right here.
It says nineteen feet.
Do you need a copy of your map?
Yes.
Please, go right ahead. I, apparently, I have two extra copies.
Thank you.
You just can't tell whether it's nineteen or fourteen, that's all.
The front was nineteen.
I think it's nineteen, though.
Yeah, it's nineteen.
I, I would, I would think that's nineteen.
Yeah, it's ten and a nineteen.
Yeah.
Ten in the back, nineteen in the front. Okay. So, I think you've covered the generalities in, of what did you try and do. What we need to do now is dive into the specifics of the five questions.
Okay.
So if you've prepared the response to those, then you can read them verbatim. That's fine with us.
Okay. Um...
You have a question?
Oh, sorry.
Did you want to give these numbers, exhibit A, one, two, three, whatever?
Uh...
Or no? What do you, should I just...
Sure, why don't I do that? Alright, so we're going to call the, the, the map, the map of the lot itself, exhibit A.
Is it, this is an official, did you guys do this, Matt?
This plot plan?
Yeah.
Um, Maynard and Paquette.
Is it certified?
You have this done?
Yes, we had Maynard and Paquette.
Okay.
For this?
No, not for this. Um, we had this done...
Then you penciled this in, I got you, okay.
Alright, and then the, the, I don't know what to call this, the arc, the designer's rendering of the garage will be exhibit B. And then we also have a print of the dimensions showing the existing house and the proposed attached garage. That'll be exhibit C. So, thank you for that. Go right ahead.
Okay. Um, on section two, question one, our response was that, um, most of our neighbors either have, um, an attached or detached garage already on their homes. Um, allowing the variance would not only provide a place for us to store our vehicles, but it would provide, um, um, critical storage, um, for lawn equipment and to help us declutter our yard, hopefully. Um, question two, um, we're only asking for what our neighbors already have. It's nothing out of the realm of, um, what's already existing in our, in our area. Number three, giving us permission to build this two-car attached garage would give our family a space to store and protect our personal belongings as well as business lawn equipment. Question four, um, this garage would be professionally built by a reputable contractor, Hallmark Home Improvement, who will bill to all town and state codes. The design of the garage is in alignment with the style of our home. It would not only increase the value of our property, but also the value of our surrounding neighborhoods. So this design of, we have a cape, so the design of this two-car garage, it, it would look as though it was meant to be there as part of the house. Um, question five, um, we, we chose A, unnecessary hardship. We own a landscaping company, um, that has lawn maintenance equipment that needs to be stored and protected against the weather and deterioration. This garage would provide the necessary protection for the equipment and would also provide personal protection against the outside elements while servicing the equipment.
Not to mention, it gives you a place to park your cars and go straight into the house.
That's the left bay.
Smokes a glass out there and play poker.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
One of the things we take a lot of pride in with Hallmark is that, is like Michelle said, when we build something like that, once it's done, it'll look like it's always been there. It will not look like an addition.
Should he name himself?
Yeah, please, could you, uh, just do your name?
Hallmark Home Improvement.
No, you, what's your name?
Oh, my name's, uh, Bob Getman. Monty, G E T M A N. Yes.
Thank you.
The siding and everything will match whatever is on the house now, what will match.
Give you this, I'm sorry, I should've given you this before. That's her written responses to the criteria, basically, let's see, let's see if this gone through as well. Sorry about that.
Time out, boy.
Can I just ask one question?
Mm-hmm.
What is the, is that a building behind the house?
My ha...
So is that a swimming pool?
It's our swimming pool.
Okay.
So much for...
Yeah. This... No, 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 no.
Okay. Um, so, I guess I just had one question, too, is I'm looking at the drawing on exhibit C. It looks like you got, the garage, as we've already noted, has been pushed back, offset, pushed back a little ways to try to minimize the impact into the setbacks here. Is that door existing, or did you have to create that door?
There's a window right there, so we figured we'd just open it up to make the door.
So if you, if you had left it up here, you could've used the door, but this is another example of where you're trying to minimize any impact to the setback. You're actually putting a door, you have to put a door in and everything in order to be able to move that back.
Right. And, I mean, bumping it forward not only helped, well, what we thought was helping with the, the setbacks with the property boundaries, but it was also, um, we wouldn't have to move any of our existing, um, heating, um, for our oil.
Yeah, we wouldn't have to move any of that, um, by bumping it forward, so, plus I wouldn't
lose my light in my kitchen.
Excellent.
How about putting it on the other side?
Um, the other side of the house is a chimney with the living room. You only have a few, yeah, and you only have a few feet, and then you've got the swimming pool in the backyard, and that section of the house gets very little sun to begin with, and to build a structure in front of the pool would just take all the sunlight away from there, and then I'd end up more with like a swamp pool than...
Where is your, like, you have a septic system?
Yeah, the septic system is in the back, um, I'll show you. Um, it's back here. Behind that L section of the house, but it's right in that area.
And you have well?
Yes, we have a well. The well is in the front yard over here.
The well is probably offset to the, uh, front corner of the house.
Yep. The front left corner, it's like diagonal out from there.
Thirty-five feet away from the house.
So if I put the garage to the other side, I'd have to drive around the wellhead probably then.
I assume there's already an existing driveway on the property?
There is, right there. So it would just shorten the length of the driveway.
Okay.
So the, and also the uniqueness of your property, you said there's a, there's a, it, it, it's, it goes up, is that what you said? There's a slope up this way?
Yep.
Yeah?
Yep.
So does that start, is it flat? Are you gonna have to do anything to, uh, level out for the garage, or? No, the back's already leveled out in the back, okay.
Our whole section of that property's already leveled out. Um, it slowly starts to taper up, like a little bit past our property line, but then it angles up into our neighbor's property, but it's, it's so heavily wooded right now. But this section right here, where we're proposing the garage, is already an existing driveway, um, leveled out. It's just ready to dig.
And if I might add also, Kevin Lynch, code enforcement officer, left me a note this evening, I don't know when he left the note, but I just read it this evening, um, that he was planning on being here, but he is ill. Um, but as far as he's concerned, he has no issues with the proposed plan, um, and that's what he said in the note. So, I can add that. Anybody else got questions?
Um, let's see, I'm just thinking of me.
Eric?
My only concern is, you said you have nineteen feet in the front, ten in the back. What happens if you just, say, took a foot off the garage? At least you'd be compromised twenty feet up front. I mean, I don't know if that's a, an issue, or...
Oh, I see what you're saying. So, I mean, in your case, though...
Oh, another foot?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean...
I think it's because of the window, right?
I, I understand that you're trying to, um, stay within all the parameters. I understand that, and I don't have an issue with it, but I'm just wondering, you know, it's only a foot. I mean, how much kipper stuff do you really have put upstairs in the attic, you know?
Um, well, the attic spaces, it's, it's only going to be a little, it's not even going to be full.
It's not going to be, no, it's just going to be rafters with some plywood on it and some sort of little stairs going up, basically. It's not going to hold lots of weight. It's not meant to hold.
There is a, I think you guys have the picture of it, you have to...
Yeah, yeah.
We'd like to have done that, but the price was like double the amount, you know, if you had like living out there, or...
Builders like to deal in even numbers.
I could contest to that.
Yeah, it's much, uh, it's much cheaper if you can keep lumbering even, you know, in increments.
Yeah, that's a standard size for a garage.
Plus, you're still, uh, you're still, uh, you're still, uh, eleven feet. You, you're, you're still looking for a little bit, uh, if you cut the foot down.
Yeah. Um, I, you know, good question, though. I understand what you're going with that. Uh, it would've made one corner incompliances, what you were, what you were asking. I see that. Um, but once we grant the variance, if we grant the variance, I mean, you know, the other corner is moot at that point, because they're going for the...
They're still going to have the same.
Um, any, anything else? Anybody else? Okay, I'm going to ask, is there any public input, any additional public input from anybody out there? You're dying to say something, aren't you?
So there's no butters here?
Looks like there's no butters here.
They responded to the letters, right?
Oh, yeah, I've got all the letters. Did you have anything else you want to add before we close public input at this point? Nope? Okay, hearing none? Uh, do I have a motion to close public input?
I'll make a motion to close public input.
You have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
On seconds? All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion carries five-oh. So, at this point, um, you guys have any questions? Anything you want to say? No?
No.
Any motions?
Yeah, I'll make a motion we grant the variance of, uh, ten feet.
I have a motion to grant the applicant's variance for ten-foot. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second for now? Any deliberation? Let's vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five-oh.
Told you it was easy.
Yay, thank you!
Now, you can't actually start construction for thirty days, because others can appeal. Anybody in the public can come up and appeal the decision that we've made here, so you have to wait thirty days. You talk with Kevin, he'll tell you everything.
And this variance, that, once it's written, because we still have to write it now.
Okay.
You want to attach and keep with the house and the deed on the house and so forth, because when you sell it, it's something you want to make sure you keep with the...
This becomes part of your, uh, property for life.
So is it thirty days from the time we get a written approval?
My decision today.
So you can, you can stop building on December twelfth? Thirteenth.
December twelfth.
Why is there no appeal? Oh, you said, circle back with Kevin, he'll get a copy of our decision. Um, as you will as well, I'll be emailing you a copy of the decision.
Please, the frost stays out of the ground.
I don't know, it's supposed to be in the twenties later this week.
Put some calcium in the mud.
So I used to ask them to volunteer be on the board, you couldn't do that.
We are looking for one more open.
I used to be chairman, and I think even all of these guys here came in and I, I would get them to join. I don't know about Eric, he'd volunteer.
That's how you got me, that's right, you're right.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate it.
Thank you guys very much.
Have a good night.
Appreciate it.
Good night.
Alright, the only other thing I had, and you got it, good luck with your build.
Thanks.
Take care, guys. Um, the only other thing I had on the agenda for tonight was voting to approve the minutes, but since, you know, we've only got three of us here, and probably only two of us were here for those meetings where the minutes, uh, need to be approved, I'm going to push that off till next month. So, um, I have no other communications to share, I have nothing else. So unless anybody else has anything you'd like to add before we close the meeting?
Well, do you want to work on this thing, or what do I do?
Yep, yep. Oh, yeah, I need you to finish reading it. Usually, we clean it up before, I'll clean it up tomorrow, but keep going.
So the first one. Uh, granting the variance will not be contrary to the public interest, uh, because proposed garage is still far from any neighbor-owned structures and does not pose any safety issues, vision, or access that might be of concern to the town.
Boy, is that good.
I had it half-written. The second one, that the use contemplated by the, it's going to sound the same, the use contemplated by the applicant as a result of changing the variance will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the ordinance, because the ordinance is, is in place to promote safety and access. Um, the proposed garage does not pose safety or access issues. Rather simple there. What do you want to add?
Well, it was, uh, it's all on paper, it seems, uh, there's a hill next to them that isn't buildable, and I don't know how you want to say it.
An unbuildable.
That's why, that's why I asked.
Forested space. It sits between its structure and the nearest, nearest, uh, neighbor.
This here?
I'm just getting dizzy, I don't know. Um, that by granting this var, okay, is that all right? That by, and that's where I just, that's where I forgot. So by grant, this is the one I always have trouble with. Substantial justice.
This is over here.
How, how? How do we, how do we spin this one?
We looked at the application.
They didn't, they're not addressing them. Provide security through the tools.
Because, uh, yeah, how can we think this one? What's the justice, what's the injustice I guess you look at?
It's, it's an odd-shaped lot. There we go. Because the house was positioned, um, close to one property line, um, and at an angle so that any...
You probably have a hundred and fifty.
Garage-like structure.
My neighbor's on my lot, actually.
Wouldn't say.
Obviously, it's more.
A garage.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, you know, basically, just to, just say, granting, granting, allowing a garage, um, you know, in this case, allows the family to park their cars.
Well, no, you gotta, I think you want to talk about, uh, what, what's the injustice here? You think about the injustice, and the injustice is they can't, because of the, what he was just saying, um, you can't add on to the building because of the angle of the...
It's, it's like...
Well, I would say that, but you can't say any garage because a one-car garage would fit.
No, they, yeah, that's true.
So I, I wouldn't say any garage.
Alright. Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say a garage, I would just say...
Two cars, two-car garages are reasonable.
Yeah.
Uh, and, you know, common. Um, they're, you know, obviously a family with children, it's like... So, they're a multi-car family, maybe they'll park their vehicles.
Kevin knows, could he just stay right in there? Somebody got a deer.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't either, man. Just typing it.
Yeah, just get something so we can...
Uh, sits, alright, well, how about, is reasonable addition to such a home?
Yeah, I just...
No determination value is that, that, because the proposed garage will be built with existing structure in mind, um, house, all, many, many houses in the area have a similar...
I tried to shoot something big.
...garage.
And then, and the, the butter to the east, I believe, is substantially higher and further...
This is value, though. How is it going to promote value, right? This is value, though, how is it going to promote value, right?
It won't, it won't diminish it, I mean, basically, they can't even see it through all those woods.
And such a structure will not diminish values.
In Texas, in, uh, two weeks.
Spell check it today.
Yeah, I think that was spelled sorry.
See, like I said, you couldn't handle it, could you? And structure. Structure.
Why is it like on my phone, it just corrects it anyway? Sometimes it just...
Uh, special conditions do or do not exist such that literal enforcement of the ordinance results in that.
This is where I'm talking about, this is where you're talking about the lot. Just talking about the, the lot, the mentions of the lot, the fact that the existing houses...
Is situated at an angle to the property?
Uh, yeah, close to the east property line and at an angle, um, you've got a swimming pool at the other side, you've got a leach field to the rear, you've got an existing driveway that kind of leads right up to where they're proposing to put the attached garage. I think all those things are, I know, I know, I'm just, yeah, but you can think, he's, he's got it all stored up there, and that's a computer-like brain of his.
Positioning such a structure.
Driving by it all the time, it looks like, you remember that?
Nah, I've been traveling.
I want to show you my new GTX.
The lot is situated close to the east property line and at an angle, a pool on the other side, and a leach field in the back, makes positioning such a structure...
It's nice. It goes, it goes alright, I don't, I don't like to...
Positioning the structure in this location the only option.
Yeah, there you go.
I do. I'll take it. I, uh, I rented a Mustang for summer.
Science seal delivered.
He's in it for two weeks.
I'm yours.
Alright.
Yeah, I was in that news racing with my kid.
No stipulations. Alright, I'll, uh, I'll take a look at that tomorrow, and I'll get that copied and sent out. So, uh, hit save on this. Alright, I think we're all set, do I have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
We have a motion to close the meeting, do we have a second?
Motion to close, second.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero zero, meeting's closed.